Okay, one minute. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of minutes from the December eighth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting and the December tenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. If no objections are registered, the council chair shall approve the same as written. Okay. Item three, approval of the warrants. Suggested motion to approve and sign warrants number fifty-nine through sixty-nine in the amount of one million sixteen thousand, eight hundred and nineteen and eighty-four cents.
So. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Item four, acceptance of gifts and donations. Move to accept the following gifts, donations, and grants in the amount of six hundred dollars as detailed below. Florence Alessi, a hundred dollars for the heating fund. Northern Penobscot Activities Council grant of five hundred dollars for the event's outdoor projection screen for movies.
So move. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Seven zero. Chairman's Town Manager's comments. The only comment I would like to make is to recognize, and for those of you who have not heard, that Representative Kathy Jaffner has passed away. She no longer was the representative for Lincoln, but she used to be. And even when they redistricted and she was no longer our representative, she still worked very hard for us in Augusta. So I would like to acknowledge her passing. And that's all I have. Mr. Bullen?
Lee Miller, police agent. Basically, I just want to introduce one of our new officers. This is Anthony Nanna. He's going to be going to the Police Academy in February. We are full staff now. First time in a long time that we're full staff. With the addition of a kid that's an officer that's going to start next week. That actually was working at Old Town. And now he's going to come work for us and go to the academy also. So for first time in a long time, the Lincoln Police Department. So I just wanted to introduce you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, I would like to take a minute in this forum to publicly recognize our town clerk, Anne Morrison, who earned the designation of certified interdisciplinary clerk. Quite accomplished.
Okay, Planning Board report. There is none? Okay. Monthly reports. Any questions on the monthly reports, councilors?
I have something pertaining to the planning report. It's brought to my attention, Madam Chair, that Mr. Robinson had went to the planning board in the cold back in May. A permit was not issued. And then now we just got one verbally given to him after the fact. And I'd like to know if EPA has been involved where it's close to the river. My knowledge, there should be a retainment. Sediment pond there to get all runoff from batteries and corroded from oil and antifreeze and transmissions and whatnot. So if this has been an ongoing problem, and the reason why he went into town office back in May and that was given, I think that's bad management on our part. And I'd like to have an update on that. And with that being said, I'd like to have an update on the code enforcement officer. How many hours a week they're working? Any benefits given? And also Agenda number twenty-one, council rule. We can't amend council rules that the council have not even approved yet. We're supposed to approve them in January. And then on Agenda twenty-three, I'd ask for a discussion for Mr. Davis to come and have a discussion. And it's been said that it's incompetent to my thought. But I would just like to have a clarification on all this stuff.
Okay, so we'll address twenty-one and twenty-three when we get to those items, if that's fine. And Mr. Bullen, can you address the others now or at a future time?
September. But I was told today, September.
Madam Chair, can you get a copy of that permit, please? Because I was under the impression that he went into the town office in May and tried to obtain one. And where there's not been a permit given, that's why he started what he did and then he halted what he was doing out there because no permits given.
Okay, we'll see if we can get a copy of that. Any other questions on monthly reports? Okay. We'll now move into open form. This is the part where the council will allow Lincoln residents and/or Lincoln taxpayers to comment prior to council action on agenda items. Open form questions should be forwarded to the town office by mail or emailed to town clerk Anne Morrison at questions@lincolnmain.org. Please have your questions or comments in by five the day of the meeting. You have any questions, please call seven nine four three three seven two. General requests may be made in open form during the regular meeting, but will not be acted upon in the same meeting. Individuals wishing to be heard by the council will be recognized by the council chair. After identifying themselves, the speaker may make brief comments and may not repeat previous statements made. The speaker must limit themselves to the item under discussion, and the speaker must observe rules of common etiquette. The council chair may set a time limit on the length of public comment and/or a time limit for individual speakers. Council chair reserves the right to stop any public comment that is contrary to these rules, and any counselor may call point of order during the discussion. Any person who disrupts the council meeting may be required to leave in order to maintain orderly consideration of the matters for which the meeting was called. That being said, is there anyone present who would like to speak during open forum? Just raise your hand and then approach the podium. Thank you. And identify yourself.
I need Denise Quatten. I am talking about, I'm number twelve on the agenda. So my name is Denise Quatten. I am a wife, a proud mom, a Lincoln business owner, and a Lincoln taxpayer. My salon has been on Main Street for thirty-two years. I attended the December twenty-fifth council meeting, the December twenty-twenty-five council meeting. Sorry. I wasn't, we weren't here on December twenty. We were enjoying time with our families. To say I was appalled by the behavior and the comments from the attending council is an understatement. My business alone is home to fourteen self-employed subcontractors who cannot live on tourist res- revenue alone. I stand here tonight to ask you to keep moving Lincoln, Lincoln forward with a vision of growth, which will bring in taxpayer dollars for the long term. In the December meeting, Councilman Hannington stated to Steve Lebec, where are we going to get a workforce? They're all retired up here. I want to remind Councilman Hannington and everyone else that we have many people in our community that travel up to two hours a day from here to their jobs to pay taxpayer dollars. Not everybody's retired. They live in our town and pay tax, they pay their taxes. The council works for those taxpayers as well as the entire taxpayer. Just at the salon, three spouses of the subcontractor pair of silos traveled every single day. One of them is deployed overseas right now in the military. But when he's back here at home, he travels every day for his job. One of them travels to Herman every day. And the third one travels an hour and fifteen minutes one way to work to pay their property taxes here in Lincoln. I assure you, if there were jobs with comparable wages here in Lincoln, they would prefer not to travel. Just talked to a customer of mine just now when I was leaving. Her husband travels every single day. She travels to Bangor every single day. She came in to see me. I said I was bringing this up, and she said her husband would love to work in Lincoln if there was comparable wages for him. And I'm a huge supporter of Northern Penobscot Tech Region right here. Do you know how lucky we are to have Northern Penobscot Tech in our community? We, they have the ability to train our youth from high school and keep them in our community as residents and taxpayers spending their paychecks here at local businesses. Please don't lose sight of the residents that voted you into the seats you're sitting in tonight on the council. Ruth, Steve Lebec, Ryan Sowers, and others have been working towards growth of the mill site. We acquired the mill site, and now we have the responsibility to clean it up and grow that former mill site. I hope you all keep in mind, keep an open mind about cleaning up the site for growth. Development of that site will bring back and create local jobs. Those people will be local property taxpayers. When they purchase land or homes, the additional property tax will keep Lincoln moving forward. Local businesses need more than temporary income from tourists six months out of the year. I could go on and on about how long-term growth would be beneficial to the schools, the hospital, and our parks and recreational department in Lincoln. But I'll save that for another. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you put your personal and political agendas aside to make educated decisions to move Lincoln forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Anyone else?
Kelly, while in Lincoln, I'd like to ask, a lot of times on these meetings with open forums at the beginning of the the stuff that comes up so the public doesn't have a chance to ask questions or anything. Would it be possible to have an open forum later in the meeting?
You're referring to the location of it on the agenda?
Same as items that come up after the forum, public would like to ask a question. Forums closed, you can't.
Well.
Been one meeting, I've been to one of those too, but usually there isn't.
Well, now's the time when you can speak to the agenda items that don't have a.
What's going to come from these other things is questions.
Give me a, for instance, do you have a comment on one tonight?
I don't think my new presentation and some we'd like to clarify. We technically can't talk because it's.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
I've been in leadership role for most of my life. Extreme counsel, junior high class officer, and council. So can't live, can't live any profits in college. And my morning duties as an educator, I advise several student clubs. I was a team leader for many years and served in multiple roles in the teachers association, including as president. I give you the background nearly show that I understand what it takes to be in a leadership position. It takes time, it takes dedication and hard work, and it takes trust. When I saw on tonight's agenda that there was a proposed motion to to reset town council leadership, I was flattered. I was actually embarrassed. I have had friends approach me and ask, what is going on in Lincoln? As if we can't get our act together. This council was sworn in less than two months ago, and already there's proposals change the leadership. Good leadership takes time to establish cohesive structure to allow for consistency. This council has already elected its leader. You need to give it time. When each of you took an oath to serve, it was to do what was best for all of the people of this town, not just the ones that voted for you or who have you here. Elections aren't over. It's now time to move forward and do what is best for the town, not rehash old grievances. Make the time that you spend working on town business worthy of the oath that you took. Focus on what is important. Making the lives of our citizens better by providing reasonable pathways to enjoy life to its fullest. You've elected Helen Moisen as your current leader. Now give her a chance to leave. Thank you.
Derek. Anyone else? Mr. Trask?
Thank you. Let me speak to John Trask, Lincoln. I'm taking the seat, item number twelve back on the agenda. I hope after that last week, you guys had, I heard it was a great meeting, and I encourage you to pass item number twelve. That's a wonderful opportunity we have for money in the community. Welcome to Biovine, folks, to the good night. Thanks for coming. Good to see you. Thank you. As far as the item number twenty-two, what a discussion, the not raised property taxes, nobody wants to raise property taxes. But the county's already told us that they are going to raise taxes sixteen to twenty percent. Health insurance is not going down, and electricity bill is not going down. So I, I'd just like to know if the idea is to go after the investment accounts that give between two and three hundred thousand dollars a year to tax fully. I, I would encourage against that. But if you don't get the money there, I don't know who you're going to lay off, and I'd like to know what department you're going to start with. Because we need the services that we have, and there was game paying promises made that we would keep those services. Item number twenty-three. If you take our title drive as a public way, there's going to be four sets of people come in and want to have their roads taken care of. We've had at least four sets of people come in over the last ten years. And we haven't done that because we can't take care of the roads that we have. It's expensive enough right now. And as far as item twenty-five B, I would love to ask, see that myself. And I would just ask, if you look at, this body is governed by the town charter and council rules. Town charter and the council rules will have to be changed before one can vote on twenty-five B. Because it's only addressed after the election is when the chair and the vice chair are brought up and voted on. It's not addressed anywhere else in the charter, not addressed anywhere else in the council rules. So I would urge you to listen to your attorney tonight and so side twenty-five B and move on with public business.
Anyone else for public forum?
Thank you, Williams. Good evening. So I have two questions. Any kind of here to reach what Charlie just said is I'd like to know what the changes in the firefighter contract do versus the previous contract they just brought to us a month ago. And then I'd like to know how much more money we spent for lawyer fees and any other due and cost where we got that new one. And then also to reiterate with contrast that if you're going to pick up a new road, we could be on Fulton Pond Road to the boat landing. We maintain a mile and a half approach yield. Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a couple of questions regarding, well, first of all, the monthly report. Usually there's in the monthly reports, there's a report from the code officer that lists building permits and other things that they've done through the month. I didn't see anything in the council package this month, wondering if they've actually, we actually have a code officer and why they didn't have a monthly report. And wouldn't it be appropriate to see statistics on all the monthly reports about what they are currently doing and looking at back one year, what they did a year ago? So you can see the value of each department, whether they are growing, whether things are decreasing. One of the things that I think you should look at on your number twenty-two discussing not free property taxes. One of the things you should do is put a hiring freeze on right now because I don't think you have any idea how many people are coming on board and whether the current budget allows for those employees to be here. And with regards to the town manager candidates that you're going to review tonight, I have a concern about how those are being handled internally, those candidate resumes that are coming in. And I think you should take a look at how that's being done, that whole process. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for open forum? Sam?
She's a policeman. I live here in Lincoln. And according to property taxes, last meeting, they had Brian Sanderson give a report on some of the properties that have not been looked at or taxed or checked recently. I live on Wilson Street, and I look over across at McKenzie Avenue. Now this summer, I've watched three brand-new homes go up over there. One of them sits quite close to the lake. I'm not sure what there, if it was grandfathered in because the old house that sat there was quite close. Have those been checked? Did they have any permits to build these homes? There's three beautiful big homes that just got built over on McKenzie Avenue. Just a question. See if rather than anybody who's checked on that or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Nelson, Lincoln. What we did before in the town I lived in, go back and take a look at the population. You've had similar to what we've got now, and then look at the resources we had at that time. Because apparently we were supplying enough resources and people were taken care of. If you don't need to expand them, don't. Go back and look at what the population was at that time. And yes, there are a lot of properties, even on Center Pond, that have not been evaluated. And I talked to one of them, so I think you ought to have somebody take a look at it because we need tax money. Let's provide it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Item number nine, council recognition. Could John Trask and Marcella Ireland come forward, please?
Marcella, I would like to recognize you for your fifteen years of dedicated service to the Lincoln Town Council and its community members. Thank you very much. John Trask, in recognition of your nine years of dedicated service to the Lincoln Town Council as community member, thank you very much.
Hold on, you can't throw away that. Thank you, guys.
Okay, at this time, I would like to welcome the Biovine Development Northeast update. And I believe this is Mr. Jones?
Hi, everyone. Hi. So I am Steven Jones. I'm the CEO of Biovine Development Northeast. And I'd like to start by thanking all of you, town residents, but the town council manager and staff for welcoming us to present to you tonight. We've actually had the opportunity several times with different constituencies and councils to present on the project and on our company. But we're especially appreciative to be allowed to talk for the new council that's constituted today. So thank you for, for that. I think, I think we've actually presented four or five times to, to, to the council. And we've had a presentation for planning work, a presentation to D E P. And, and I think at every turn, wherever we get the opportunity to help educate and, and inform people about what we're doing, we, we, we welcome that. So, so thanks very much. The second thing I'd like to do is to introduce the rest of the team. So there are four of us here. I'll have them stand up. Ian Toll is our operations manager. He operated our, our pilot plant, our commercial validation plant at Old Town at the Forest Bioproducts Research Institute for eight years. And, and now he's full-time with, with Biovine. Mike Passata is our chief development officer. He's actually spoken to this, to this group before. He may be known to, to many of you. And he's been responsible for developing contractual relationships with fuel buyers and feedstock providers, as well as teaming relationships and partnerships with government agencies and municipality. And then Steve Fitzpatrick is actually, it should probably be giving this talk. He is the founder and inventor of the Biovine technology. He, he's a lot smarter than the rest of us, but he, he, he has a funny accent. We don't want to. But Steve, Steve is the chairman, Steve is the chairman of Biovine and the chief, chief science officer of Biovine Development. So I know that there are a lot of questions tonight about, about what we do and what we mean to do. So I'll sort of lead the presentation, but these guys are here for a lot of questions to the extent we can. You don't think so? Okay, so let's go to the first slide then. So what I want to do is I want to spend, I have the time just talking about Biovine, who we are, what we do, and then about how I'm talking about the project. And, and I'll try to go through it as quickly as possible to save time for questions. But don't take that wrong if, if you like to, to ask any questions you might have. So we're going to go back to the beginning on this. Biovine is a developer of bio products. So developer of refinery plants for biotecnicals and, and fuels. The, the proprietary technology that we have is a potentially very disruptive technology in the fuels and chemicals markets, and it's been developed over more than a quarter of a century, as I said, by, by, by Steve Fitzpatrick and his team. There have been questions about our finances and sort of who supports us. I can tell you that more than twenty million dollars has been spent in developing the Biovine technology and about three and a half million to date in developing the Lincoln project. And in a moment, we're going to come to talking about the commercial validation plant that we've been running in Old Town, Maine for, for, for many, many years. The plants that we'll build in Maine and in New England are meant to support revival of lower businesses and enterprise, and in particular, the growth of the forest. and in particular, the growth of the forest, re growth of the forest free industry. And we've chosen Lincoln Maine as our home. And we always like to point out the last year we were actually recognized as the top green chemicals company for twenty-five by the Chemical Bank. So this is our pilot plant. Some of you might have been there, maybe not. But we do, right now, want to invite all of you to ask for a visit. I think that it's very helpful in time, our experiences, that every time somebody comes for a visit to the plant in Old Town, scales often rise and sort of see, oh, you know, there's something really important going on here. And, and recognize the scale of what we've, what we've been doing and perfected for so many years. So I know there are rules about how you guys are all able to come together at certain times and how many of you. But we'll work with the town manager and we'd love to see you guys there some time soon if you'd like to come. So very briefly, this is, this is our technology and I made it really small so that nobody could really understand it. But very quickly, what our process does is it takes cellulose in virtually any form, primarily wood waste, but paper waste and other agricultural residues. And, and it converts it into some platform, kind of like three in particular that we'll talk about in a minute. It's, it's what's called a dilute acid hydrolysis process that introduces sulfuric acid into a reactor at, at high temperature and pressure. And it has a residence period of about thirty minutes, so it's a fairly quick reaction and compact. So it's, it's, it's a reactor and a process that can fit in multiple places relatively easily. Steve and Ian can answer any questions that you might have about this. One question that we've had in the past is, what is it smelling? And I can tell you that it doesn't smell anything like the old Lincoln plant used to. It's actually a kind of a sweet nutty smell. And when you come to our, our pilot plant, you'll get a chance to.
What about, what about name butter, the, the extra fuel? It now uses that same material. He could guide butter.
They do. It's true. You can go to the next one. That's fine. So these are the three products on the, on the left, the primary platform products, levalin acid, formal acid and lignos char. So, and from there, we can refine these into multiple energy products and, and, and different biochemicals. So in Lincoln, the little white arrows, we'll, we'll turn the levalin acid into the heating fuel, as Steve mentioned. It's called ethyl levalinate. We'll talk about that in a second. I'll make a formula and get along to that. We're also making formal acid, potassium formal acid, calcium formal acid that has a lot of different industrial uses, in particular as an deicing agent. And then we're making biochar that has a lot of use too as fuel and, and in chemical form. One of the great things about BioFine's technology, though, is that it has such a diversity. As we all know, you have diversification can create very stability. So we can take all kinds of different feedstocks, cellulose and stuff, and turn it into all different kinds of, of products. And what that does for us is it insulates us from shocks in any particular market. So, so we can make more fuel today and if fuel prices blow off, we can make, we can make more of the other stuff. And so that's a great, it's a great, it's, it's, it's one of the, one of the things that we'd like to talk about in this product, in this technology. So this is our fuel. It's a, it's a, it's heating oil. It's ethyl levalinate. So it's a, it's a drop in substitute for, for the heating oil that you might be getting in your house today. It's compatible with your furnaces, with the legacy infrastructure that exists to handle it. But maybe in some ways better. It's very stable over a very long period of time and very low core point. Cold flow properties remains liquid down to minus seventy C. Because of the way it's made, it eliminates particulates, reduces carbon monoxide, nox and tox. And this has been developed and tested with the National Oilfield Research Association and the National Energy and Fuels Institute. And one thing that we, we always face to point out is that the, 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 the heating oil industry is under a little bit of pressure. That they're, 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 they're being pushed to find a biochemical or biofuel alternative. We represent actually one of the best, one of the best alternatives for them and we get as tremendous amount of support.
Yeah, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Okay. You mentioned no particulates. What happens to particulates? Do they get filtered out in the process? Or are you actually making use of them as something else?
So I would say, first of all, this is much cleaner burning fuel. And so there are fewer to begin. But is there something, is there a better answer than that?
Well, you, you were saying it produce, that it doesn't produce particulates when it burns. It seems to me then particulates have been pulled out of the system along the way. Is that accurate? That so that there's fewer particulates? Those particles have gone somewhere else?
No, they don't get produced in the combustion.
They don't get produced in the first place.
Clean product. Usually it's fuel mix, but if it doesn't burn properly, a fuel produces so. But this produces no so because naturally the oxygen is in there in the biofuel with the fuel. So you can see there's about a third, it's about a third oxygen. So a lot of oxygen already to must react with the power.
Right, thank you. That's right.
I was going to hold mine till the end, but it is heating oil related and since born broke the ice. And I meant to bring it with me. It's in my other binder. I think it's, I think you're the author. Could you give, this is where I'm really interested. I believe it was you who wrote the letter to EPA in module seven. What's the status of that? Because I, I looked that up last week and it doesn't look like EPA has really moved and, and. I know it's read the TV, but if it kind of goes against the way we would like for it to go, how is that going to affect? And that's my second question. How much of this heating oil is actually your proposed market share?
Yeah, I mean, so we have a pathway right now. If the question is, will it qualify for raised credit? And as it stands now, yes, it will. We have a number of new patents. Talking to the EPA, as it stands now, we apply with their RINs, they change. Take another path to get compliance, but there is a pathway to.
Okay, so there's really no question. There really is, there's a plan B.
Sorry.
There is a plan B.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there are a couple alternatives. There's actually another answer too, which is the RINs are, they're, they're doing for us what they were intended to do, which is to help new technology build to scale. This is only something that's important to us at, at the level we're at now. At scale, the, the RINs are not important to us and, 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 you know, that is another approach that we can potentially take is, is, if, if, you know, for some reason, if we can't imagine those, those pathways where the scale, scaling of makes sense.
I have lots of questions, but right now, as a substitute for heating oil, what's the cost gallon per gallon? What do you project as far as going against the standard oil, heating oil?
So we, we've contracted to sell a hundred percent of our fuel to Spray Resources. Spray, you, you, you might know, largest heating oil producer in, in the Northeast. We are selling that, that fuel at parity with, with, with heating. They predict that they would be able to sell it at a premium because it has some green, green attributes. But, but the, the, the price point for this fuel is the same as heating.
Okay, because regardless of the benefits, when it comes down to looking at your pocketbook, you're going to buy the cheaper.
Sure. Yeah, no, no, no.
Thank you.
This is General Dyke, who was the ability three different times, in his presentation. The one that grew up in Wilson Street, he has two paper mills, he has various feedstocks producing feedstock. I was to ask Mr. Stiles tonight what his average age there for the logging. With the installers, whatever. So you have fourteen fuel install mills or paper mills that we had twenty years ago. And if we need feedstock to produce gallons, which is a good concept, there's no question about it. Ancient oil is more than that for me to be in. Is the feedstock going to be there if we have less than last contract producing the raw product to get to the mill? So we're going to be taking out a few and few of raw products to the mill. So in my mindset, you're going to have a few and few of reduced quotes for the feedstock coming to BioFine. So, I mean, in reality, I don't really see it really being a hundred percent viable right now because we don't have to really take the, the ninety percent of the product that we need to be profitable as a contractor. So to me, I just don't, it's one hundred percent viable. I mean, in theory, it looks good. Sixteen years ago, it would look great better. To me, I'd like to know if we had a book that different raw product coming to the camp here, coming from Canada, coming from Vermont. You couldn't handle it. To me, to get it out of the wood basket, it may not have because we have fewer and fewer contractors. Contracting because they can't get any of the raw profit as it is.
So I'm glad you're bringing this up because we're actually very deliberate and careful about this, this, you know, this wood baskets contracting business. And, and we've had this very, this, this very discussion. And you touched on one point about, about the ages of foresters and forestry industry. And, you know, we've been talking to foresters, we're part of a number of initiatives to help introduce young people into the industry and, and, and we're very supportive of that. And we're looking for more ways to support the young foresters program in, you know, in Washington County, you know, and locally here. And, and so, so I'm glad you brought that up. But, but to your point about, about whether the wood basket is going to produce the way, you know, the way it has. I mean, we've taken an approach that is to work with a consortium of logging and forestry groups. Because we know that a lot of people show up saying, oh, there's wood everywhere. But that's not exactly the point. The point is, can you get the stuff that you actually need? So we're working with the consortium. We've been adding names to that precisely because there's a little bit of anxiousness within that industry about if we say, look, we need ten thousand pounds per year of this RINs qualified stuff from you. That they're, they're a little worried that they, they, they use that up. So working with the group, we can spread that risk a little bit. The other answer I have for you on this, though, is that we want to be part of the answer to that problem. And, and when we can pay for chips and, and sometimes a little bit of a premium, we can actually help make some of the logging that would otherwise not be profitable, profitable and viable. So, so we're very sensitive to this point and, you know, and we're by no means why I often is about it. It's, it's, it's something we think very seriously. Thank you.
I've got a question. All goes down to forty-eight dollars a barrel. You still profit?
To what price?
Forty-eight bucks a barrel.
I, I don't think, I don't know. It's not a direct correlation.
So, okay.
It is a different.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the yes, the forty-eight dollars barrel. Bro, ten hundred, but go to forty-eight. He said, who do I believe here?
Okay, can, can we allow Mr. Jones to continue his presentation, please? Go ahead, sir.
So, yeah, I just, I, I. So if we go to the next, the next slide, I, I, I just want to speak to this, these couple of slides as well. We function largely through the, you know, the benefit of the partnerships that we form. I mentioned the public will be, we've worked with the town, worked with the M B C, the Forest Bioproducts Research Institute, the university. We're doing pilot programs with the, with Portland Maine Airport and main turn of hype for use of our deicing agent, the formal acid that we're making. And these, these collaborative affiliations continue to provide, you know, tremendous benefits, thoughts and, and kind of speak to the, to the, to the promise that this technology shows. On the next slide, we talked a little bit about the private sector partnerships we form, but I just mentioned spray. They've been very helpful in facilitating our A S T M certifications and new product marketing of the heating fuel. In this, this last summer, we signed M O U with a UK company called Drax. They're the largest wood pellet manufacturer and explorer in the United States. And that, that relationship is all about potential co-location strategies where they will build pellet mills. We will build, we will build our plants right beside them and share a lot of the common infrastructure. We've signed an agreement with Heart Cross Chemicals to market all of our non-fuel products, which there, there are several, in particular levalin gases that we mentioned, percolate. And finding in Star Cross is a hundred and forty-year-old company and they, one of the largest distributors of chemicals across the United States. Recently, we just awarded our engineering contract for, engineering and construction contract for Lincoln to consigly construction. And with their engineering partners, SPAC from Twixbury Mats and, and B five. One of the great things that we like about this is how local this team is. Consigly does just amount of work in, in, in Maine and they're very eager to expand their presence here. And I should also say, they're very, they're very dedicated to finding local subcontractors in, you know, right in these areas. And it's something that's important to. And finally, we work with PR and we've been listed on the, on the NASDAQ here over exchange for our carbon credits. So just to kind of sum up this part of the presentation, you know, our vision is to promote development of a fleet of locally based bio refineries using local feedstocks, local contractors and marketing our products locally. We want to expand this stable enterprise based on that diversification that we, that we just talked about. We're, we're also looking to reinvigorate the local resource base that the economy, local economy used to thrive on the basis of resources that they had in the immediate area. We want to be a part of that again. We want to be a part of returning to domestic energy and domestic sources, commodities and specialty chemicals. And we want to create new markets based on the technology that we have. So that's BioFine. Just to talk about the project a little bit, and this might be the part that you guys all know a bit more about already. So this is phase one of what we plan as at least three phases out of the whole Lincoln Paper Fissure Mill site. This will be a one hundred and fifty ton per day plant, meaning we'll process a hundred and fifty tons per day of feedstock. We'll turn that into four million gallon of heating oil. And we're also going to make about twelve thousand tons per annum of potassium formal acid. I think I've mentioned, so potassium formal acid is used as the concrete accelerant in cold temperatures. And it's used as a deicing agent in aviation and environmentally sensitive areas. It's regulated and highly valuable. And then we're producing about eleven thousand tons of biochar which can be integrated in pellets or sequestered and. Or sequestered and, and produces carbon credits. So this plant costs about a hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. Uh, and um, we, as I mentioned, we spent about three and a half million dollars. Uh, on this to date. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the, the number of uh, different partners that. Uh, we're working with, most of them I've mentioned. Um, uh, uh, some of the forestry groups that were uh, talking to or uh, uh, plan to be talking to were listed there. Uh, American Forestry Management, Treeline, Hannigan Brothers. Uh, about the beginning. Um, we're also looking to source wastepaper from Innovative Resources, the uh, uh, the, the new owners of the Hammond. Uh, facility, uh, that I want to see there. And then we contracted with names who is a national uh, operators and main contractor. Uh, so we've been at this for a while. Uh, we start our, uh, we kind of. Plot our birth back to the day we signed our lease with you guys, so that was April of twenty twenty-three. Um, since then, we've also executed our uh, our, our, our off-take agreement with Spray. Uh, we've entered into engineering services agreements. Uh, with uh, O'Neil and then subsequently, you know, with uh, our new E B C uh, consortium, uh, we. Uh, had our final validation report issued by an independent engineer, Lidos. Uh, internationally recognized. Um, I, I'm not gonna go through each of these, but um, uh, most recently. Um, as I mentioned, you're uh, uh, we've just signed up our, our, our new engineering procurement construction contractor. So what's left to do, um, we're finalizing our, what's called our bell free or feet. Design, that is a twenty to twenty-five week exercise. Um, at which point uh, we will uh, uh, be in a position to close financing. Our, our current plan for financing. Uh, closing and starting and those to proceed for construction is uh, third quarter twenty-six. So you might ask why does this take so long? Then because that's what everybody always have. Um, and this slide, some of you might have seen before, but um, development is a very iterative process. Uh, uh, and, and it's based on multiple work streams, fighting and permitting, engineering, construction, feedstock, profining. Uh, marketing, teaming, finance. Um, and each of these has impacts on, on our model and the commercial structure. Uh, all of them have to be tested, all of them have to be sounded in the, in the market. We get feedback and then we go through the whole process. Again, our model has uh, uh, more than two hundred independent variables, uh, and a hundred. Uh, distinct operating calculation. And every time we change one, we have to go through and, and change all the others. So, so you know, it's, it, it's a, it's a long process, but um, if, if you're, if you're careful. And deliberately come up with the right answer, that's, that's just a short end of this, why it takes, takes as long as it does. As I said, that on the next slide, uh, we do plan three phases of this and, and our target uh, output is a hundred, it's fifteen hundred tons per day, so that is. Our uh, feedstock uh, throughput is fifteen hundred tons per day. That is um, that is ten times the, the initial project size. Um, and um, and we think that's a, uh, you know, a great size for this site. Um, great size uh, relative to the feedstock that's available in the immediate area. Um, and, and relative to the markets for those, for those products. Um, and finally, just to say a couple of words about uh, the, what, what we are doing in the community. Um, I'm sure you've seen these numbers, uh, uh, a hundred and sixty-six total jobs directed and inferred, running full. Uh, four full-time plant shifts of um, thirteen uh, full-time employees each. Uh, so that's fifty-two and then an additional hundred odd uh, inferred jobs uh, from the multiplier effect into the community. When, when we're built out to all three phases, uh, that, that, that number, uh, hundred sixty-six number becomes uh, uh, you know. So, something closer to four thousand. Um, uh, the uh, the model shows that we're paying direct rents of over two million dollars to the town. Uh, and um, uh, sixteen million dollars in incremental tax benefits. Um, but we don't really count uh, uh, contribution, just in dollar terms, like jobs. It's, you know, it's the other things that we do and the other things we want to support. Um, workforce training initiatives, uh, local workforce housing initiatives, um, and encouraging the use of local contractors. Uh, is very important to us, contributions to the young foresters, education campaign, supporting local businesses. And just one last thing that we're very excited about, um, for, for years, we've been operating our pilot plant. Uh, at the university, uh, F B R I in, in Old Town. Um, what, what we expect will happen and intend to happen is, is that the activities that are going on there will ship. To, to Lincoln once our plant is built because it's much more efficient and will be running all, all of the time. Uh, we expect the university will want to be part of the, um, the, the Lincoln Innovation Center. Uh, and a participant there, um, and we see that it's just a very quick, clear add-on to, uh, to the positive impact we'd like to have. So that's everything that I wanted to say. Um, again, I appreciate uh, your, your, your time and your letting us come and talk. Um, may, maybe, maybe I've gone on too long, but um.
No.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, any questions? Mr. Rowell.
Just as background, I used to be with the U S Department of Energy. I don't see them, which is surprising. As part in some form with all of your partnerships. Uh, also, when I go to the internet and I look for bioprene, I have not seen your incorporation. Where are you incorporated? Your board of directors, your real capital? And when I ask for bioprene operating facilities, it brings me to Lincoln. So I am very concerned that from an audit point of view. I don't see those things. It looks wonderful. Also, the Wall Street Journal. About two weeks ago, published an important article about Warehouser. That is doing something similar to you. And they got several plants here in Maine, so they're gonna be competing for feedstock with you. I know I just wrote it, you, but might as well throw them all at once and, and that, those are my concerns.
Um, so. Forgive me if I don't answer all of them at once, but um. Uh, so Bioprene Developments Northeast is a C corporation, uh, incorporated in the state of Maine. Um, Bioprene Technology is a limited liability company incorporated in Massachusetts. Um, who's the owner of the, of, 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 of the property. Um, let's see, uh, we have purposely not engaged with Heart of Energy. Uh, uh, because of the timing and some of the scrutiny that their programs uh, seem to attract. Um, sometimes they're a little bit of a lightning rod and, and, um, and they can take a long time. And so we're, we're kind of happy to be operating at a size where we don't have to, to work with them. Um, and, and we don't think that um, our, our technology is sufficiently well proven and that we don't think that we, that, that we really need to. Um. I guess with regard to Warehouser, I, I, I don't know the article you're speaking about. Um, we know that we're always facing competition. Uh, we pay, we face competition from conventional. Uh, we pay, face competition from uh, con, con, conventional uh, commodities. Um, and, and uh, you know, uh, and not only for feedstock, but uh, for markets as well. So um, you know, this is all part of the uh, part of the, the calculus that we do every day. Um, when we set prices in our models and, and uh, you know, and pay customers. Um, I don't have a better answer than that, but um, you know, what I do know is that the investors. That have backed us for many years to date and the ones that, that are interested in working with us into the future. Believe in this enough that, that um, you know, that's the bell that we care.
One last question. One of the slides said that the uh, final cost is going to be one point one billion dollars. How much of that is staying in Lincoln?
So the, 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 uh, the final cost of that project, one point one billion is um, is that's the capital, that's the capital cost. Um, you know, I think uh, you know, we may have investors from out, clearly, there would likely be investors from outside of. Um, but uh, the job is local, uh, the taxes will be local. Um, uh, and, and you know, Lincoln is our home. I mean, that, that's, that's the, this is where we decided to, to come and build and stay. Um, and so, um, you know. It's where we're focused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's fair. Um, John. I didn't want to attack ladies here. You're gonna need about two hundred and fifteen twenty loads of feedstock per week. That would mean that there would have to be like fifteen hundred loads per week, obviously. Buying all this is not doing contractors that's able physically or financially get up to speed generating them. And if they do, that's great. And another thing, we can talk about this, uh. And Mr. Gordon back there, when we worked at the mill, the mill put up a beautiful building, building eight, the tissue mill down there. Why would we? Or why would you? Want to come to us and give us your blessing to tear, for us to tear that building down? I would not even dare to say how many square foot building that. It's not even twenty years old. Uh, to me, it don't make sense, uh. As an operational standpoint, to tear that building down with, where you could directly fit it and use that building. It could cost the taxpayers up several hundred thousand dollars. To tear that building down in a. Manner that we could reuse it and store it off-site to re. Put it back up again. So. We've already spent over three million dollars there. It could cost seven, eight hundred thousand dollars to do that. Where we've already. Uh, had to go in once and we've already gave the lease agreement. Are we gonna go back in for the second time and renew the mortgage? And how can we sell that to the taxpayers and say, look, we need six hundred thousand dollars to tear that building down? Where you could probably put a million dollars in it and you.
Um, so I'll take those at work, uh, and, and thank you for asking that question. Um, or both of those questions. I, I don't have knowledge of what you're doing in front of you, um, but I can't speak to the, you know, the loads per, the loads per day. Um, the, 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 the work that we've been doing, the forestry groups, uh, uh, the timbering groups that, that we name. Um, based on um, you know, tonnage, uh, and um, and uh, what they are currently doing. Uh, and what they forecast to be doing and, and uh, there's. Uh, a, a surplus, uh, it, you know, among that group, uh, that we can count on. So. Um, I'd be happy in, you know, another form to talk in more detail about that. Um, the building eight question is a complicated question. And, and um, I don't blame you for, for, for asking it. Um, the truth is, uh, while there's about four hundred acres on that site. There's actually a very small amount that, that is usable, uh, currently. Um, and that is because of the environmental liability that, that exists there. So the, 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 the V route, uh, that, uh, the, the state has provided. The, the, uh, what is it about voluntary, uh, reporting, uh.
From their response action.
That's it, thank you. Yeah. So, and, yeah. That, uh, 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 exists in that one, in that, in that one area. Um, all of the work that we've done to uh, design our plant, materials handling, or access point. Had revolved, revolved around that. As we started through and actually about the time we got to the end of the initial. Uh, uh, design period, we realized that it was costing us a tremendous amount of money. To work into building eight, which is where we sort of ended up having to, to, to work. So um, we, we came to the conclusion and it wasn't, uh, um, you know, it wasn't an easy one. Um, that uh, uh, economically, it was going to be much more sense to, 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 uh, to, you know, to build on a slab. Um, and unfortunately, that's the only slab that's available.
So that building couldn't be recompeted?
Right, we can, we can make sure, as town attorney, we can make sure that this council. Has the information they needed in the proper setting. That, that has been substantially discussed, counseling, but there are very good answers to your good questions.
You guys have any, again, again, down there? Actually, money to the downwind.
Yeah, I, I would ask.
Okay.
There, the, the parties of the public, they ask to be recognized. There, there, there are questions, the way they're being posed. That I think aren't respectful of the presentation and speakers. And so if you'd ask to be recognized through the council chair, uh, before you ask your question, that would be appreciated.
Okay. Wade Gordon. You guys have any of your own money in the melt site, Lena?
I'm sorry. Do I answer that question?
If you wish.
Well, what I can tell you is what I said at the top of my presentation, it's that, that uh. Bioprene has put more than three and a half million dollars into, uh, into the development of this.
The research, have they put anything in the melt site?
I'm sorry?
Have they put anything in the melt site?
I think this is probably one of these points that we should make.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Oh, you answered my question.
Yeah, well.
Uh, sir, I just thought you, there is a business development organization established years ago. Called the Lincoln Knights Innovation Incorporated. They are working with public staff who are accountable for this council. Those questions that you're asking can be answered in the proper setting.
Okay.
But they need to be recognized as economic development confidential conversations that are contractual. And so I have a fiduciary duty to this body and to the town of Lincoln more generally.
Okay.
To make sure that your questions are asked in the right form and addressed in the right way.
And, and this is not it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You answered the question.
Okay, well, anyway, we're taking a lot of your time. I thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, all of you for coming with the presentation. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item eleven. Approve and sign a town council resolution, which is for economic development support. Move to approve and sign the attached resolution in support of the economic development team and their efforts.
Uh, so moved with one adjustment, uh, can we rephrase, can we?
Oh.
Rephrase this, yes. Make sure you get your, your correct phrasing in there. There was, what went out, I didn't have the phrasing quite right.
I don't remember now where I put it.
Um. Item eleven. You have it in item order?
There it is.
I think the town clerk has a.
Okay.
Do you have it in?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ann.
So the last sentence, they wanted to take it out. It says currently and, and other funding, as long as that funding comes with very little risk to Lincoln property tax. They would like it changed to.
Uh.
And I do not.
Including by applying for grants and other funding opportunities that do not increase Lincoln's property tax.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Look, hold on, we first need to, I make that motion, you have a second. There you go.
Okay.
Uh, we just kind of. Like to make just a quick comment. There's a lot of governing that goes on behind the scene, other than what is seen on the agenda. And I, I, I know. You know, some public perception might be we're still getting ourselves under our feet. But. I just wanna, I just wanna point out and take my hat off to my fellow counselor, Gordon Street. This is actually the second project. You have reached out to me and said, hey, can we work something out together here? Uh, and, and make it work? And, and we did. And I, I think without. Uh. It would be safe to say politically, we're probably opposite ends of the. But the fact of the matter is, we can put our politics aside and come together. Put something together that actually is. And, and for the best of the town of.
Best of the town.
I, I appreciate that opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further discussion? Ready for the vote?
Can, I just quickly, we, just a, a brief for the people out there. Um, this resolution is basically saying that we appreciate. the work of the economic development staff, principally, uh, Ruth Bertsch, uh, Steve Levecq, and Vicki Rumfil, uh, Rumsfeld.
Russfeld.
Russfeld, that's all right. Uh, and the work they've done, and we want them to keep going. We're giving them a little guidance on how we want them to go forward. Is that accurate? All right.
Yeah, I'm not. I am all in favor. Like I said last week at the public workshop, I'm all in favor of economic, uh, development, as long as we're not doing it on the backs of our property taxpayers. So this, I think with this effort, that solidifies that.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, seven zero passes. Item twelve.
Uh, the one from.
It'll, yeah, we'll have to have it retyped with that change. Item twelve, approved loan grant. Move to approve the loan in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars with the State Department of Economic and Community Development for a term of twenty years at one point five percent interest for remediation of building twenty-two at the former mill site. Who, who said that? So move, state, Gordon. Discussion?
That's fair. Before we vote on this, uh, I want to open it in one property, it's where the drawing is set, and it comes up to the tissue, uh, paper machine four and five. If we vote to approve this, is the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars gonna be adequate to tear that building down? There's probably twenty yards of asbestos. I would say that that would be mediated. In my estimation, uh, there's not a whole lot of pipe in there that needs to be mediated. I'd say twenty yards would probably be sufficient to say. Now, is the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars gonna take care of that? In my mindset, it would be several hundred thousand dollars.
If I recall from the meeting that we had, it's gonna take multiple grants. This is gonna get it started.
So it could take up to a million dollars to, to do it.
I, I'm not gonna quote numbers, but it was, this was to start it.
Now, second note. When do we shot, start showing a profit to pay this interest back? Is that profit from day one that we collect a dollar? Or is it a profit after we initially collect the money that we invested that part?
I'm trying to remember from the other night. I believe it was the latter. Mr. Bullen?
I, well, it's rude to explain this. I'm, I'm implying agree with you. After the BioFine starts to make profit.
Do I need to get up there or can you walk there me? Okay, so building twenty-two is one of the largest buildings on the site. Currently, we have two grants ongoing, working on different sections of building twenty-two. On, on January twenty-eighth, we're going to request two more at the price tag of four million. And as I told you, we have an estimated cost of sixty million dollars of remediation there. We're plugging away at it. We've got about a third of that done. Obviously, we have these price tags, so it's gonna take multiple grants to do that. In regards to when we pay that back, that is after we make all the investments in infrastructure to upgrade it and expansions. As you know, we have a plan to CBS request right now to, um, rebuild scale streets with water sewer, et cetera. So that is after all that investment. And we will be collecting rents, we will be collecting taxes. That's the hope during that process, but the idea is reinvesting and expanding so we have more jobs, growth, more tax base growth, et cetera. So, I'm not going to say first of all, but I'm going to tell you that paying that back will come way in the future, because there's a lot of work to be done there, and estimate objective remediation in ten to fifteen years.
And just to clarify, it's not when BioFine makes a profit, it's when the L-L-I-C makes a profit.
It's when it makes profit. Not when BioFine makes a profit. BioFine is a tenant, is going to be a tenant on the site. So even the money they pay us for leads, we're going to show that we're reinvesting it into the mill site with further projects. We will go for grants just like we are now and do the majority of that grant money. But the idea is to do the best we can with as little as we can and not show a profit, so we don't have to pay those back.
Madam Chair, is, are the, are the credit, may I, uh?
You couldn't address Dennis.
Dennis, now, is the credit is okay with us? Maybe they're lending us monies ten years down the road without any return on that investment?
That's the program that this is, the, a loan program. And it's for economical development. It's just for economical development. Okay, as town attorney, the distinction I draw by Councilor Anderson, between both the concepts of profit and net revenue, which is really what we're talking, the Lincoln Knights Innovation Corporation's net revenue, um, the time period for return on investment by both the local business development corporation and the town of Lincoln, has to be understood in the life of the history that you know so well. And that is Lincoln Pulver Tissue, Lincoln Pulver Paper, operated for decades, decades. There is a ton of environmental remediation work to do. Um, if we talk about the sins of our fathers and mothers, we'd be here all night. Okay, so we're, we're dealing with a condition that requires brownfield redevelopment. One of the things that you noted is that there's asbestos in one of them. Asbestos management on this property has been the subject of endless conversations with many people. And we are able to manage the asbestos on that site under geologically sensitive conditions. So there's been some innovation with respect to environmental remediation of this mill site, but hasn't been seen elsewhere in the state. That's going back into the town of Lincoln. And so your pride in the work of Lincoln Pulver Paper and Lincoln Pulver Tissue has to now change to how you remediate that site. And I agree with what his birth said. I think it's gonna be a long time before you'll see net revenue. But look at what the alternatives are. Look at if you don't acquire that property as a town. There was nobody else coming forward. EPA was proposing to this community with this entire site, he made a superfund site. And you wanna talk about the Department of Energy, let's talk about the Environmental Protection Agency. There would have been decades of study. Nothing would have happened. So are there some risks being taken? There's risks walking across the street. But I think what's really important about your questions tonight is that you're trying to do the diligence that you need to do with public officials, and you've got an outstanding presentation by BioFine, and you're getting at the root of your questions, how do you cover these agenda issues? But I thank you for your questions, but we need to make sure that there's the opportunity respectfully to provide information to you, and your questions are the best way to do it. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote. Move to approve the loan in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars with the State Department of Education and Community Development for a term of twenty years at one point five percent interest for remediation of building twenty-two at the former mill site. All those in favor? Close? Okay, passes seven zero. Thank you. Item thirteen A, public hearing, renewal state liquor license application for the Lincoln Tap House. Suggested motion, move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments on the proposed renewal state liquor license application for Lincoln Tap App House.
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion entering in at, oh, first, we have to have, boy, no discussion. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, entering in at eight twenty. Any discussion? Okay, exiting at eight twenty-one. Um, approve, item thirteen B, approve renewal state liquor license application for the Lincoln Tap House. Move to approve the renewal state liquor license application submitted by the Lincoln Tap, Tap House. I have a motion.
So move.
Eric, discussion? All those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Item fourteen, authorized closures. Move to authorize the following closures for the Loon Festival, July fifteenth to nineteen, twenty twenty-six. Veterans Memorial Square from July fifteen to July nineteen, to all vehicular traffic on July sixteen through nineteen, from ten AM to eight PM. July sixteen and July seventeen, close McCannick Street from five PM to ten PM. Only part of the road will be closed to make sure businesses can still remain open. July eighteen, close part of Main Street and West Broadway from Maddenokook Academy to Goding Avenue, starting at eleven AM until the parade is over, usually around twelve thirty. Close part of School Street East Broadway and Lincoln Street on Friday, July seventeen, and Saturday, July and eighteen, to ensure public safety for concert goers at Cobb Field.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
I've got a quick question here. We've got Veterans Memorial Square from July fifteenth to twen-, uh, July nineteenth, to all vehicular traffic on July sixteenth to nineteenth, from this period. Nothing, none of the following stuff says anything about the fifteenth. So I'm trying to figure out, is that a typo or?
It's when we start setting up. So I only need part of the square for that for most of the day, because the vendors come at night. So all of my, my food vendors in the morning, the tents come in the morning, and then all of the other vendors come at night. So I only need part of it during the fifteenth. The six, the sixteen, uh, seventeen, eighteen is when the act of festival will be taking place. So that's when there's not any people around and everything like that. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like two-fold here, where it's like the fifteenth is just part of it, but during the festival, it's to, it's to reserve CEP to the festival.
So what is the area and the time period that you need on the fifteenth?
Um, that varies depending on the, the time of day, but there will be adequate parking within that area for all, you know, for the businesses and, um, and.
I see, so we don't need.
So on the fifteenth, that's Wednesday, I usually close it off, um, the, the parts that are closest to, like, the, the, to Main Street, and then leave the closest to, like, the town office and like that open for most of the day. And then as the day progresses, um, it kind of closes off little by little, and then the vendors come after, you know, close better.
I got it. So the Victor, uh, the, on the fifteenth, you don't need the entire thing closed, but you need some authority to close parts of Memorial School.
Yeah. And then the school's going on that, so I'm requesting no vehicular traffic inside of the area uh, for festival goers. I almost saw a child get hit last year in my heart when I drove.
I remember you talking about.
I'd love to see that happen.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Close? Okay, seven zero. Approved closure, item fifteen, move to approve closing part of Prince Thomas Park for the annual Brady Nickerson Fishing Derby on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-six.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Item sixteen, approve contract and authorize town, town manager. Move to approve a one-year contract, August one, twenty twenty-five, to July thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, for IAFF Local Thirty Thirty-eight Firefighter Union, and authorize the town manager to sign the new contract.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
I think we had a question from the audience at one point about this. And my understanding is, if, make sure, I'd like to know if this is correct, that the duration of the contract is the only thing that got changed down from, from three years to one year. Is there any, is it correct that that was the only change made? All right.
Madam Chair, also, when we vote on this, in the future, can we make sure that these contracts come before the council and finally, yeah, so we're not setting where we are today, operate without a contract?
I also ask, so what was the extra cost for attorney fees and any other fees that were accrued while we were, while we were going to get again? So the only thing that was changed is the timeframe to this contract that we did?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and then so what, what did it cost us to make that decision?
I don't.
Look at me, I'm not the labor and employment attorney.
Your parents, your point of order, Madam Chair, can we, uh, state to the agenda, please?
All right.
Okay, all those in favor? Passes seven zero. Move to confer, item seventeen, move to confirm the town manager's annual appointments pursuant to Title Thirty A, Sections Twenty-five, Twenty-six, Twenty-six oh one dash A, and four two two one as follows. Alternate code enforcement officer Bruce Arnold, alternate plumbing inspector Bruce Arnold.
Hello?
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Chair, I understand this is a part-time, correct? He's sitting at the bottom.
Uh, Mr. Bullen?
This is, uh, appoint Bruce Arnold, in the case of the full-time code enforcement can't make the inspection.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, seven zero. Item eighteen, move to confirm the council chair's committee appointment of Eric Rojo to the finance committee.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, seven zero. Item nineteen, appointment to the fiscal twenty twenty-six budget committee members. All budget committee members will need to take the FOAA training for the amended FOAA Training Law, one MRS subsection four twelve, and fill out a completion sheet to be filed with the town clerk. Uh, move to confirm the following appointments on fiscal twenty twenty-seven budget committee. I move to appoint Stacy Williams and Steve Perry. Eric, do you have your?
I had two. One was medical, disqualified today. My other appointment is David Moish.
Steven, do you have anyone? Gordon?
Not yet.
David?
Uh, Javet Mayo and Ralph.
Sheldon?
Nancy Erickson and Mary LaMonaco.
Lee?
Uh, Jack Connolly. And that's the only one I have.
Can you spell that last name, please?
T-O-N-N-E, uh, L-Y.
Okay, and the first name was?
Yeah.
Jack? Oh. Okay. Um.
Eric, did you have one person or two?
Yeah, one.
I had two. One right now. I'll have another one later.
Okay, so only David Moish? Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, before we vote on this.
Is there a deadline for people to add more?
Yeah, we do this in, um, January and February, and I think sometimes March, if we don't have it filled. So we'll vote on this again, but we'll vote tonight on what we have. And given the fact that someone has nominated my husband, I will abstain from the vote. But the rest of you, you will proceed with a motion to vote on these names?
Councilor Chair, now, so, um, you know, I have a point of order to prepare. One of the point, the, was it, was it Mary?
LaMonaco.
Is that individual a possible candidate for management? You can have somebody on the committee who would also serve as a manager. And have somebody on the committee who would also serve as a manager, is qualified to the candidate to form manager. So.
We, we haven't discussed the candidates.
Yeah, I, I just.
The candidates are not public notice, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Careful who you nominate for the budget committee in case the person nominated might ask to be. A candidate for a manager position because the manager.
Point of order. That's a moving point, Mr. Hamilton. The only one that should be privy, privy, privy to the applicants is the council. And the council own.
That's, that's a fair point in terms of my state knowledge, I'm just saying, in general. You don't want to nominate somebody to the budget committee who might be, uh, selected. To be town manager because it's inherent conflict between the manager position and budget committee, that's all.
If I may, in that hypothetical. Would not then that person just? No longer be eligible for the budget committee?
They could withdraw.
So. Okay. All right, so I'll just, again, I'm gonna abstain from the vote. But I'll just repeat, we have Stacy Williams, Steve Perry, Dave Moison. Jibet Mayo, Ralph Lichtenberg, Nancy Erickson, Mary La Monaco, and Jack Connolly. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Five, one with one abstention. Okay. Item twenty, zero-based budgeting directive for fiscal year twenty twenty seven. Suggested motion, move that the town council direct the town manager to develop the fiscal year twenty twenty seven municipal budget using a zero-based budgeting methodology. Under which each department shall be required to justify all requested expenditures from a zero baseline. Rather than relying on prior year appropriations with the objective of identifying inefficiencies. Eliminating unnecessary spending and ensuring that all expenditures are essential, cost-effective, and aligned with current service priorities.
So.
Discussion. Gordon?
May I ask a question of our acting town manager?
Yes, you may.
All right, um, is this different from how we're doing thing, have been doing things in the past year?
It, it is somewhat different, um, although we have done the zero-based methodology in the past.
Is that a problem to try to do this on for this budget?
It will greatly lengthen the process.
So we should start the budget process sooner?
Maybe if we looked at it that way. At that, but it would be, it would be close to now.
That's what I was wondering, actually, that's what I was gonna say, you would start now.
Oftentimes a budget is, we start with last year's figures. We, we check our expenditures and then develop. Plus or minus from. So I think what, uh, Counselor Ireland is asking is that we start from zero.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is something we have discussed, and we need to start from, from the base. We have talked about needs and wants, the zero base will allow the budget committee and also the department heads. To clearly state what they need. Vis a vis what they want, they can have a wish list on one side, should there be any money in our justification for it. I have provided the town manager and I will send all of the members to the council. A document I have generated. And. Councilor Gordon has a copy of the best buy option where people are required to find the best option for the best price. And a good economic return. Because there are ways of doing this that have proven to be cost-effective at any level of government.
I'd just like to interject, um, at the end of the year, when we go to reconcile. It's, it's fairly telling to see how much money we actually have left over. Uh, which measures is very, very. In developing the budget the way we do.
Any other comments? Okay. We have motion?
So move.
Oh, actually, we did, I ta- I take it back, we did have the motion. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Four, three. Item twenty-one.
I'm fine table in twenty-one. For now, I don't know, you still have to read it, it's a little lengthy, but.
Um, I don't believe I have to read it if you're withdrawing your motion for this meeting. Okay.
We have not passed the council rule yet.
That happened at the November meeting.
We did pass. We, we did it in, in November.
Same practice. Okay. I follow.
Okay. Item twenty-two is a discussion, discuss ways for the council to not raise property taxes. Counselor Rand, this was your motion, so would you like to begin?
Well, it was a motion, and when I got the agenda, I found that it was just a discussion. So what happened? Anyone wanna find out why that was changed from a motion to a discussion? I'm, I'm just curious before I get into.
Well, uh, I believe we changed it because we wanted to understand. I mean, just to have a motion that says we're not gonna raise property taxes.
Sounds good to me. Okay.
So.
My motion is not to raise property taxes this year. Okay? I got my idea from the campaign in the fall when people were coming up to me and saying, what are we gonna do about our property taxes? We can't afford to live in Lincoln anymore. And so my property taxes went up. In fact, my property taxes personally, with me and my wife Connie, went up, uh. Over one thousand dollars in two years. And we don't have a big mansion, I'll tell you that. But anyway. So I made a commitment during the campaign when I ran for town council that I would introduce legislation or a motion or what have you. To keep property taxes held to what they were this year or, or last year. And that was basically my motion. I made a promise during the campaign and I'm keeping my promise. We work for the taxpayers and the citizens of Lincoln. Okay. And the people of Lincoln were telling me during the campaign that they can't afford to live in Lincoln anymore. I had a woman come up to me in McDonald's the other day crying her eyes out. And saying, Lee, what can I do? I can't afford my house anymore. I said, well, you know, I can only do, I'm only one person, I can only do one thing. But I think if we, if we cap. The property taxes this year at last year's level. Then when we get to the budgetary process. And everybody starts wanting to spend money in all the different departments and everything else. They're gonna have to look at those and say, well, wait a minute. If that's gonna raise property taxes this year, we can't do it. I think, you know, we can't keep business as usual. You know, towns all across the state of Maine are ga- are, are. Discussing property taxes. Okay? And a lot of them are just business as usual. Well, we can't do anything about it. Or maybe Lincoln can be a little bit different. Maybe we can do something about it, maybe we start right here with this. So that was my purpose for, for putting the motion in, which is now a discussion, but okay. You know, I, I'd love to hear any, any comments, I know there's people here. Who have talked to me, uh, over the last, uh, couple of weeks or so. You know, saying, yeah, great, you know, we've gotta do something. And then I have the other people that tell me the same darn thing, and they say, yeah, but you know, it'll never pass. You can't, you can't do, you can't fight town law. You know, they're gonna keep spending and raising taxes anymore. Okay, well, let's find out. But we, as, as a town council, as a representative of the taxpayers and people of Lincoln. Let me just. Say, no, business as usual, we're just, uh. You know, we're just going along with more spending and more taxes. You know, nothing we can do about it. I, for one, am gonna vote for this if I have to get a chance to vote on the motion. And, uh, at least I can go back to the taxpayers and the voters. Uh, next fall, if I run for reelection. And I could say, hey, I kept my promise. Promise is made, promise is kept. And that's what we're gonna have more of. That's, that's all I have to say, if anybody has any questions, but.
Well, it's, it's not a discussion for the public, it's a discussion for the council.
I, you know, I understand what you're trying to do. And I think that it sounds like it's a, you know, I understand why we'd wanna do that, and I think it's a, a wonderful goal. But we have an interesting problem, and that is, we've already got the county commission is saying that they're going to have, what, a seventeen percent increase?
Minimum sixteen, they're saying.
And we don't get to control the, the school board. And so it seems to me that what we really, what we can do is say we want to not increase. The amount of, uh, to, to increase the amount of spending. Uh, we could try to do that. But we can't control, if we did that, then all of a sudden we would have to be making a cut in our, um, expenditures. By twenty-plus percent next year.
Maybe that's a good idea. I mean, you know. Uh, so basically, are you saying that we just increase our spending every year because?
No, I'm saying that to keep it level, we would still have a more than twenty percent. Uh, it, uh. Ta- uh, increase that's coming to us that is not in our control. And so we, that. We, it seems to me that what we can try to do is keep the expenses. Within the same range as what we had, uh, for last year, sort of this year, the last fiscal.
Governments always grow. Governments always wanna spend more money. You know. It's. It's like Eric Rojo said earlier, paraphrasing what I said two weeks ago, whatever it was. We have to look at what we want. And we have to look at what we need. And we have to, that's what we have to do with our home budgets. And our families. You know, what do we need? What do we want? Sometimes we can't always get what we want. We have to look at things differently as a town government. We know we can't do anything with the, with the county budget, can't do anything with the school budget. And what have you. So we're gonna have to make up the difference, I guess. We're gonna have to say Lincoln's gonna do things a little bit different. We're gonna answer to the taxpayers. And they can't afford the government we have right now. Maybe we can in two years or four years or what have you, can't do it right now. And I'm speaking as a taxpayer, not, not necessarily as a town council person. I mean, I'm hearing the people, once they found out I wanted to do something about property taxes, I had people coming out of the woodwork. Ha, oh, great, gee, you know, telling me their stories and have, like the woman in McDonald's here up there. You know, so. That's what I'm doing. And if my fellow counselors. Support it, great.
A point of order, Madam Chair, remind the counselors there to address the chair.
I support. What Counselor is proposing. If we, the taxpayers, have to tighten our belt. So we can survive in this town. My neighbor is leaving. She's selling the house of two years because she can no longer afford to live in Lincoln. I personally had to take another job. Because in the three years I've lived here, I pay over five hundred dollars a month more in mortgage because. My three hundred and eighty thousand dollar. Property valued house is being taxed at six hundred thousand. So the taxpayers can accommodate. The spending of this town. So the town has to tighten the belt the same way we do. So we have to find a cap. And the idea of capping our taxes. To twenty twenty-five is probably a beginning.
Madam Chair, we are where we are today because. Whatever came about. In, in, in Counselor Rand, I agree with. If you want an agenda item to be voted on, put it, you need to put it on the agenda to make sure it's there next month. And I'll support it a hundred percent. Because we need staff. We need to rein in government.
I, I would like to know, uh. Madam Chairman, I. I would, out of curiosity. I did put a motion in for this meeting. I'd like to know what happened to it. Who changed it?
Madam Council Chair, members of the council. There's a document that we must all in the town of Lincoln become aware of, it's called the Charter of Town. Okay? Just gonna take a moment, Counselor. Counselor Rowe. To address your comments, because even Counselor Ireland, this idea of the zero-based budget that you proposed.
Point of order, Madam Chair, I'm prepared to address this in executive session, even a few more points.
This is directly relevant. To the discussion. Because the council rules provide in section twelve. That it is the job of the council chair, job of the council vice chair. And the town manager formally agenda. I have to say, Counselor, I respect your sentiment. I think taxpayers across the state of Maine are facing a very tough dynamic. I understand. But. Take a look at the structure of the charter, section six oh two addresses appropriations and budget. It says the budget of authority of the council should be limited to the final determination. Of the total appropriation to be made to each of the several offices, department and agencies of the town. Section six oh three says the budget establishes appropriations. Six oh four says the budget establishes amount to be raised by property. If you want to effect a cap on property taxes with down Lincoln, Counselor Rand. You need to go to either a charter commission, I would suggest, or to a charter amendment. Because your charter is the organic authority of the, of the town and has been since nineteen sixty-nine. And that says what it says. The sentiment is understood. All the counselors who addressed your sentiment after you have addressed it. Understand, but it is a motion that would violate the provisions of your own local charter. And so this community has got to understand that you have practices on the books for decades. For reasons. The town manager prepares the budget. We have a town manager form of government. You wanna get rid of the town manager form of government, you're gonna have to amend this charter. Because that would violate the charter. And Counselor Rowe, I'm surprised, we've had this conversation that the charter governs. The actions of the town council, I submit. That there needs to be a careful review by this council of the charter. To make sure you don't violate the organic law of Lincoln. The charter is foundation and it is supreme. Until you amend the charter, you can't do some of the things you're looking to do. So I just want you to be aware. That is the rule of law that governs.
Madam Chair. Yeah. I have just a little open question. Or I can ask you the question. Uh, so. Are you prepared to argue that section twelve? Gives authority? To the chair, vice chair, town manager? To change a motion to a discussion?
It is the responsibility of the council chair. The council vice chair and the town manager to form the agenda. And if anybody, Counselor.
It doesn't say form, it says prepare, it's an administrative task.
Sure. Then make your argument. But you're, you're on a different page than I am, you weren't prepared.
It's right here, I'm reading it.
So the actual council rule is, as Counselor Hannigan has demonstrated several times at council meetings I've attended. Did you raise it at the council meeting prior? You don't wait until after the Monday before the council meeting? To bring any motion forward and say, just throw it on the agenda? That's not how a responsible agenda is prepared under your council rules. You do have the authority as council to amend your rules, but I tell you, Matt, the rules govern.
I don't think anyone's saying, I don't think any of us are saying that. I think we'll be continue, continue this, we admitted.
Okay. Anything else for the discussion on item twenty-two? Mr. Rojo?
We need to review the charter and changes. So we will have the proper authority to run the budget. We need to review the charter and changes, so we will have the proper authority to run the budget. And because we are the governing body, the town manager and the staff are the administrators. Well, we're gonna change that because we get elected, they are not elected, we are elected, so we are the government.
Okay. Item twenty-three, discussion, having the town take on tunnelway as a public way. And yes, councillor Hannington, you put it in motion, and it was changed to a discussion because it has not gone through the roadway committee, which is the correct process when you wanna have a town of road accepted as a townway.
Well, Mr. Page.
Okay, to, at the roadway committee, he will.
Not tonight?
We are not the roadway committee, so we can't, we can't enter, we're not prepared to handle those discussions, and Mr. Bowlin, do you know when that meeting will be scheduled?
Typically, we have a roadway committee meeting in February for a while.
Okay, any other discussion or? Okay. Item twenty-four, discussion, set an interview procedure to hire a town manager. Um, and by interview procedure is meant the process that we're gonna go through, not that we're gonna sit here and discuss how we're going to interview, just to be clear. Um, we want to schedule and conduct interviews, the proposed dates are to have the interviews on January twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And then we will schedule a meeting to deliberate on those interviews and select the next town manager. Anyone have any input to that? Mr. Ireland?
I would like to see us men's interviews uh, much sooner than the twenty eighth and twenty ninth, we've got the other means that uh, I'm waiting to see uh, you know, if, how the process works, and I say we we do what we can to get this done even sooner than that. I think, yeah, this is kinda, I guess, my question. You, are we gonna interview all the candidates, are we gonna interview some, what's the process?
Well, that's what we need to decide. Um, we currently have twelve applications, which to me seems like a very large number, so I think as a group, and we have an executive session on this matter, we need to narrow down the, that list because twelve interviews is a lot.
Is that what we're gonna use for the executive session?
Yeah.
Figure out if we're going to reduce that number down?
Mm-hmm. So maybe we should table this until after the executive session, assuming we get that completed by ten o'clock, because we gotta be out of here. Okay?
Just a clarification, are we still accepting applications?
Um, we stopped, we stopped advertising, so.
But I mean, I, I got an email today from someone that wanted to send an application, and, and I said, send it to the town office, you know, as soon as possible, that's all I said, you know, I did, you know, but I wasn't sure whether we were still accepting applications, and that would have made it, if, if in fact this person does, that would be thirteen.
Well, if we, if we do indeed decide tonight which ones we're gonna interview, that application would have to be considered if none of these candidates pan out.
Uh, I'd like to move to table for this until after item twenty-seven.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, all those in favor? Okay. Okay. Mr. Bowlin, did you have something else? I'm sorry, you did have your hand up. Oh, I thought, okay. Exec- uh, executive session, item twenty-five A, move to retire into executive session pursuant to Title One MRSA, section four oh five, six E, discussion with town attorney regarding the council's legal rights and duties.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor?